This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, we're going to, as we start to try to work out the technical difficulties we may have, the time is now seven o'clock and this is the April 29, 2021 work session of the Allen Del Mayor and Council. Welcome to everyone who is joining us via video and teleconference. We ask that you please mute your devices at this time so as not to distract from the business of the meeting. There'll be several opportunities for the public to be heard tonight and we will advise you at the appropriate times. Michelle, please read the Open Public Meeting Act announcement.
Sure. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year confirmed at the annual meeting are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and on the borough website, published in the record within the first 10 days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the April 27, 2021 sunshine notice was sent to the record, the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger, and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and borough website.
Great, thank you so much. Michelle, please conduct the roll call.
Councilwoman Holman.
Hi, Michelle, I'm here.
Councilwoman O'Connell.
Here.
Councilwoman O'Toole.
Here.
Councilwoman Sasso is absent. Councilwoman Strouch.
Here.
Councilwoman Holcinski.
Hi, Michelle, I'm here too.
Hi, and Mayor Bernstein.
Here, thank you so much. Okay, so we're starting early, it's seven as opposed to 7:30. We will be going in, the governing body will be going into closed session at this time. So we will be back at 7:30 for our regular open part of the work session. But at this point, I would ask for a motion to approve Resolution 21-126, which authorizes the governing body to enter into closed session under attorney-client privilege/negotiations exemptions and to discuss updates on 220-230 West Crescent Avenue contract negotiations. So I'd ask for a motion.
Senator Strouch. Senator Strouch. Senator Strouch.
Thank you, Amy. And second, Jim? Thank you, Amy. And second, Jim? Thank you, Amy. And second, Jim? Okay, second to Holman, thank you. Michelle, please conduct the roll call. Okay, second to Holman, thank you. Michelle, please conduct the roll call. Okay, second to Holman, thank you. Michelle, please conduct the roll call.
Sure. Councilwoman Holman. Sure. Councilwoman Holman. Sure. Councilwoman Holman.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Councilwoman O'Connell. Councilwoman O'Connell. Councilwoman O'Connell.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Councilwoman O'Toole. Councilwoman O'Toole. Councilwoman O'Toole.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Councilwoman Sasso is absent. Councilwoman Strouch. Councilwoman Sasso is absent. Councilwoman Strouch. Councilwoman Sasso is absent. Councilwoman Strouch.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
And Councilwoman Holcinski. And Councilwoman Holcinski. And Councilwoman Holcinski.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Before we go to the closed session, I just want to further reiterate or advise Before we go to the closed session, I just want to further reiterate or advise Before we go to the closed session, I just want to further reiterate or advise that the public portion of the work session will resume at 7:30. So for those from the that the public portion of the work session will resume at 7:30. So for those from the that the public portion of the work session will resume at 7:30. So for those from the public that are joining right now via video or teleconferencing, you can either wait public that are joining right now via video or teleconferencing, you can either wait public that are joining right now via video or teleconferencing, you can either wait on go-to meeting or leave for about a half an hour and then come back in at 7:30. So on go-to meeting or leave for about a half an hour and then come back in at 7:30. So on go-to meeting or leave for about a half an hour and then come back in at 7:30. So at that point, motion to go to closed session? at that point, motion to go to closed session? at that point, motion to go to closed session?
We get that, yeah. We get that, yeah. We get that, yeah.
Okay, so, and everyone has the link before we cut off? Everyone has the link to go to? So, and everyone has the link before we cut off? Everyone has the link to go to? So, and everyone has the link before we cut off? Everyone has the link to go to?
It's a Zoom link, so hopefully everybody has it. Yeah, Michelle sent it out, thanks. It's a Zoom link, so hopefully everybody has it. Yeah, Michelle sent it out, thanks. It's a Zoom link, so hopefully everybody has it. Yeah, Michelle sent it out, thanks.
Okay, thank you, everyone. We'll see you on the other side. Okay, thank you, everyone. We'll see you on the other side. Okay, thank you, everyone. We'll see you on the other side.
See you on the other side. See you on the other side. See you on the other side.
Time is now 7:30. Pull up my agenda. All right.
Okay, so we're waiting for 7:30 to come around?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I don't know if any of you saw the weather forecast that Ron forwarded out, but it looks like, yeah, so from tomorrow morning, 8:00 a.m., to Saturday morning, 8:00 a.m., just beware, be ready.
I didn't read the whole thing, what did it say, Jim?
There's a storm blowing through, and they're saying that between 8:00 a.m. and Friday, tomorrow morning, and 8:00 a.m. Saturday morning, there's a risk of wind, 30 to 40 mile an hour winds, and the, the peak period is, I think, Friday afternoon to early morning Saturday, like 2:00 a.m., where it may hit 40, 50 mile an hour wind gusts. You know, so you would think with all the storms we've had, we would have shaken out all the weak branches or trees, but, you know, I guess the answer is no. But it was good to know, I was, I didn't realize we had a storm blowing through, I thought today was it, but I just.
Time is now 7:30, and the work session has resumed, for everyone joining us via teleconference, et cetera, welcome back, we will continue with the public portion of the agenda. Public comment, we open the meetings to the public for three times, three times to the public, anyone wish to be heard at this time? Not seeing or hearing anyone, close the meeting to the public, and the administration, now I will go to the administration part of the work session, and we will start with the agenda review, tonight, we will be conducting our public hearing for the 2020 Bergen County Open Space Trust Fund Municipal Program Park Improvement Application, improvements at Crestwood Lake, which Councilwoman Wazinski will speak about during the hearing in the regular session. 21-128, approve application of Hampshire Allen Dale MF Urban Renewal LLC for tax exemption and financial agreement, either Amy or Ray wish to speak to that?
Yep, right now or later?
Why don't you do it now?
So, this is for the pilot, it's a financial agreement that we have as part of the acquisition of 220, 230, so this is the application for the pilot for 220, which is the residential portion of the project, which we are looking to close sometime in June, the actual pilot will be on the, as an introduction further on in the agenda.
Okay, thank you for that, Amy, two ordinances will be introduced tonight, ordinance 2107, which approves the financial agreement with Hampshire Allen Dale MF Urban Renewal LLC.
That's what I was just speaking to.
Right, and then, thank you, and then the other one, ordinance 21-08, which amends our code to recently, in response to the recently enacted legislation by the state concerning cannabis, Ray, anything you want to add to that?
This is the, the format that's been recommended to all municipalities, whoops, I may be muted, this is, this is the format.
You just talk into your mic.
This is the format recommended by the League of Municipalities to all of the municipalities statewide, in light of the recently passed legislation, there's some uncertainty as to what rules and regulations governing zoning of various marijuana and cannabis-related facilities, including medical facilities, may emanate from the newly appointed commission, so this is an opportunity to have a moratorium locally until we see what those regulations look like, and then a decision can be made by the governing body as to whether to revert to our prior ordinance, to amend it in some respect, so the options will be opened at a later date.
Great, thank you for that, there are 15 resolutions listed on the consent agenda for approval, I'll group some of them together to the extent that it makes sense, 21-129 is to authorize final payment and release of retainage for the paving program 2020 with D and L Paving Contractors LLC, our borough engineer has advised that the paving program 2020 project is completed and final payment can be made to the contractor, so that's good news, 21-130, covenant to comply with provisions of IR Internal Revenue Code of 1986 and designate $4,176,518 of bond anticipation notes as qualified tax exempt obligations, Lisa, I think you're on, is there anything that you'd like to speak to about that?
No, that's good.
Okay, Matt, anything?
Nope.
Okay, thank you, 21-131, authorized refunds 2018 and 2021 tax overpayments, those are, that's a routine resolution to refund tax overpayments, 21-132, authorized submission of 2020 recycling tonnage grant application, many thanks to Julia for submitting this in report that is due to the NJDP, so thank you to Julia, the next two are together, 21-133 and 21-134, authorized 2021 salaries, non-union employees, and authorized 2120, 2021 salaries for Crestwood Lake employees, these resolutions set the 2021 salaries for our non-union and Crestwood Lake employees respectfully, and 21-135 and 21-136 is to establish the 2021 Crestwood Lake fees and to waive the 2021 Red Barn fees, nonprofits and community organizations, it's a good time of year, we're excited, spring leading into summer, we're excited that Crestwood Lake is scheduled to open on May 29th, a huge thank you to Councilwoman Wazinski and Holman, Ron Kistner and the DPW staff, and Lake Manager Tom Viscardi and his staff for all their efforts to make 2021 a great season, resolution, the first one, resolution 21-135 sets the fees for 2021, and 21-136 waives the Red Barn fees for nonprofit community organizations, Amy, anything you'd like to speak to regarding those resolutions?
No, but just thanks so much for Michelle for all the hard work with the Red Barn, it is like the most popular place in Bergen County, so she's been getting constant, non-stop requests to use it, so it's a beautiful space, however, you have to be an Allen Dale resident, so we're lucky to have that little gem up there.
Great, thank you, and absolutely thanks to Michelle for all of her hard work, 21-137, appoint police department personnel, police radio dispatcher, full-time John Rubino III, aka Trip, and Jonathan Huber, we're happy to hire John Rubino and Jonathan Huber as full-time radio, police radio dispatchers, both Trip and John have been working for us on a per diem capacity, so now they will become full-time to fill two vacancies, recently full-time dispatchers Mike Shell and Blake Smith resigned, as well as per diem dispatcher, Nick Gallum, we thank them for their service to Allen Dale and wish them every success in their new endeavors, next, 21-138, approve extension of temporary modification and relax, and relaxation of portions of chapter 185 outdoor cafes in the borough of Allen Dale due to COVID-19, due to the ongoing pandemic, we are extending the temporary modifications to portions of our code that we made last year to streamline the red tape, so to speak, regarding outdoor cafe seating, Steve.
How long, how long is that for?
We, we're.
Through September 13th.
Yeah, so we weren't sure, we wanted to absolutely make it through the end of Labor Day, so into the middle of September, September 13th, many thanks to Councilmen Sasso and Strouch, we discussed this in committee, we, we give a lot of thought to this, we have a great committee there, we do a lot of good things, a lot of give and take between all the different members of the committee, and we thought that this was the right thing, we wanted to support the restaurants, businesses, yet balance the, the, the safety concerns, and I think we've done it, so thank you to everyone, 21-139, approve the April 15, 2021 bill list, Ivory doing it, Matt and Amy?
Yes.
I did.
Thank you so much, the next four, is Amy, I think, had mentioned that there's a lot on the agenda on 220, 230, so the next four are kind of read together, in that they all have to do with 220, 230, so 21-140 is to approve the First Amendment to amended and restated agreement of purchase of real estate between Borough of Allen Dale and Hampshire Venture Partners LLC, the next one, 21-141, is to approve and authorize the execution of subdivision deed for 220, 230 West Crescent Avenue, the next one, 21-142, is to approve and authorize execution of the warehouse redevelopment agreement between Borough of Allen Dale and THC Allen Dale Industrial Renewal LLC for redevelopment of property to be designated Block 1005 and Lot 3.01, and the fourth one, 21-143, authorize and approve execution of the water main easement agreement, to say that this is a busy time is an understatement, I am privy to or participate in some of these conversations, but Councilwoman, Councilwoman Wazinski, and certainly Councilwoman Holman, and the 220, 230 team have been working relentlessly, relentlessly to get this to where we are, it's a very busy time, it's a very exciting time, the approval of these four resolutions will bring us another step closer to closing with the developer, Amy, is there?
Yeah, I'd like to comment on these a little bit, because they're all very important documents, and they're, you know, they're, you know, obviously the purchase and sale, the amendment of the purchase and sale, and the reason that we have to have the amendment is that we had to have a provision, a provision in there where Hampshire was going to be helping us out, if you will, with some of the asphalt because of the environmental issue that we had, authorizing the subdivision deed, there's four different subdivisions that had to be subdivided, the lots were made into different lots, then from, from that, they have to be authorized with, with new numbers, new meets and bounds, so that's not an easy, an easy task either, it's getting all the engineers involved, et cetera, to make sure that the maps match the legal descriptions, the execution of the warehouse agreement, the redevelopment agreement, this pretty much just revisits the redevelopment process, however, because there's, there's two different entities here, the warehouse and the residential, there's two different redevelopment agreements, and then the authorize and approve the execution of the water main easement, for some reason, there was a water main easement that was never reported with the county, so this turned into be something that doesn't seem like it should have been a big deal, but it actually was, it took a ton of work, lots of engineers, lots of attorneys, back and forth, like, I can't even tell you how many times to get this in, so, you know, Tom Borgi and, and Wisp Borgi's office, you know, did a great job just trying to keep all these together, back and forth between all the different experts, lawyers, et cetera, so it was, it was extremely busy a couple weeks, and I'm really thrilled to have all these on our agenda today, because it's really moving towards our major goal, which is to close on, on the back building first by May, and hopefully the front building by June.
Okay, good, thank you for that, so before we go to committee reports, I do just want to make note of a minor modification on 21-134, which was the, to authorize the 2021 salaries for Crestwood Lake employees, the resolution that you have says that that will be effective May 10, 2021, but actually, it's going to be, legal counsel has requested it be effective as of May 15, 2021, so it's just a change of five days, but when we get to the regular session to approve the consent agenda, we'll do it as amended to 21-134, okay, everyone go with that? Okay, so now let's go to, we have some time, let's go to committee reports, Councilman O'Connell, would you like to give your report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, as far as OEM, we have cases down in town, and good news in the county, cases are down, we still have to give our, leave our guard up, we still have people in intensive care, but that number is going down finally, and that's good news, I've been working for, to see if we can do some Memorial Day services, maybe, we're trying to see if we have to do a virtual thing, or we could do a live thing, we're working that out with the police department and the veterans, same thing with the holiday observers, they're working on doing some Fourth of July events, and kind of excluding the events where you're too close to people, but we're still working that out, as well as the fireworks, and as far as Allen Dale, the calls into headquarters were 4,397, 911 calls were 485, fire calls were 31, and AVAC was 123, we did have two officers attend a safety course called Below 500, it was a basic safety course, and that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Ed, and thank you for all your hard work, Councilman Sasso was not here, so, but he has been, we've been working diligently in the land use, we have the outdoor cafe modification, and we gave a report at the last meeting, and I don't think we've met since then, Councilwoman Holman, would you like to give your report? You're, you're muted, just. Okay, great.
Thank you, so, you know, we always have a lot of water meetings in between our official meetings, so we did have an official water meeting where we talked about all the many components of what we're moving forward with, being the RFP, the design proposal, talking about things going on within the sewer, I think it's important to bring the council and any residents that are on or listen to this meeting, that we did have a, the request for bid is already been advertised, and out in the market, we've had companies come and pick up the bids, officially, we had a request for bid pre-meeting with any of those companies, and they now can also schedule site tours via Ron Kistner to actually come and see the water system, Lisa also today attended an I-Bank seminar, and thank you, Lisa, for doing that, just looking at possible funding mechanisms, should we be putting the PFAS treatment system into place ourselves, we also have decided to have a fourth virtual public water meeting, which is scheduled to be held on Tuesday, which is May the 4th, I believe, 2021, it will be in the May Happenings newsletter that goes out, and we'll be discussing the, you know, where we are on the options being considered for Allen Dale water going forward, we also will have a review of some of the questions that were sent in after meeting number three, and let's see, it's important that everybody knows that the bids are, for the water system are due back on Friday, May the 21st, and Ron, I know you and Lane have been working, you know, continuously facilitating repairs, as well as ensuring that we have materials for the management of the system going forward, I got to sign some bills on supplies for valves, et cetera, and I thank you for all the work that you and Lane do in interacting with sewers, you know, we have meetings with them, tomorrow we have our monthly meeting with Jeff Picknick, who runs the actual day-to-day operations of our system, and I just, you know, thank you so much, from the sewer side of things, I want to make sure, and it's going to be in the May newsletter going out, please, please remember that no resident is allowed to hook up their sump pumps to this, their sewer discharge in any way, shape or form, I know some people do have a lot of water, there needs to be a way that it does not dump into the sewer system, the sewer next to the police is our second largest budget expense, and it just is not an acceptable way, and there are ordinances that prohibit that, so we are looking at trying to reinstitute the actual checks through town to ensure that people do, you know, some people may not realize how their, you know, their sump pumps work, but it is really important that they understand that the sump pumps need to discharge out of the house, into the backyard, into a drainage pit, into the stormwater runoffs, but they may not go into their sewer discharge, so if anybody has any questions, as always, feel free to contact me on the 220, 230 projects, it's again, been a pleasure to work with the team, and Amy has really been masterful, and I think, you know, Tom, as she talked about today, and the rest of the group have, has worked hard to take it to where we are today, and now we need to push it across the finish line, so, thanks.
Great, thank you for your report and all your hard work, Councilwoman Wazinski, would you like to give your report?
Sure, so we talked a lot about the 220, 230, we have our, you know, all the important documents on the council, hopefully everything will pass, our big next milestone date is May 10, so we are looking to close on the back building, and that will be a big day for celebration, many years in the, in the, in the works, as I mentioned, we are looking to close the residential part, which is the front part of the building by June, and then after the closing in June of the residential, the demo is supposed to start, so we're looking for actual demo to be started in the, in the summertime months, and then the building after the demo should take about 12 to 14 months to build, so we're talking the end of '22, possibly the beginning of '23, when the building will be erected, Crestwood Lake, as we discussed, is opening, we actually opened up our registration on Monday, we are working hard, the GBW is working hard, the nice sand was delivered, it's really looking so, so pretty up there, there's a ton of people out, which is so nice to see, we did have to raise our rates a bit this year, we were actually planning on raising them last year, however, due to the pandemic, we did not, so minimum wage, as anybody knows, is increasing, so we took a really big hit with that, because usually seasonal workers are not included in the minimum wage hike, and now our lifeguards and our gatekeepers all have to make $15 an hour, it's a gradual increase, however, we're getting to the top of the scale, so that's a big budget hit for us, chlorine is up and everything else, but we really try hard to keep the rates really low for residents, and if you compare to a lot of the other pools and stuff in the area, I think people will be pleased. So, the playground is actually coming along nice. If anybody drove by, it's actually up there. It looks really fun, I have to say. It probably, uh, Liz and I, we decided that we didn't have the capabilities to pick out a playground herself because we were picking out a playground that looked nice, that matched everything. So we enlisted a couple of, uh, 10-year-olds. So we had a, a crew together and they picked out this super, super fun playground. So we're looking, I, I mean, it looks like it's going to be done before Memorial Day, but I'm not going to say that. So it looks, uh, we're looking to have it completed by Memorial Day. So it's going to be a great addition to, uh, Crestwood Lake. Um, as we saw on the agenda, there's Bergen County Open Space, um, that we'll talk about. There's another grant we're putting in, but this playground was done by Bergen County Open Space. Our last playground was also done by Bergen County Open Space and that is still, um, standing there. Our band shell is done, which was another grant by Bergen County Open Space. So this year we plan on, we did, we did have this big grand opening planned with all local bands last year. I think we're going to just have like a soft opening this year because we're not really still sure what the, um, executive orders are, but we, we are planning on having some bands this year. So our fields are looking great and there's, people are playing ball. So I'm happy to see that. Um, 9/11 memorial, um, this is the 20-year anniversary. The 9/11 ceremony is near and dear to my heart and it's near and dear to many residents of Allendale. We take it very seriously. We have an absolutely gorgeous ceremony in a beautiful space up by the red barn. So, um, we actually decided to, uh, uh, open up and give the opportunity to residents to purchase some pavers. So when we built the memorial years ago, and then when we got this deal and, and we also, um, added to it, we have the opportunity for, um, residents to be part of the memorial. A lot of residents approached us and said they wanted to. So for a limited time, you will be able to, um, purchase pavers and be part of the memorial if you want. And, uh, looking to, we're starting to plan already. I'm looking for a speaker and, um, uh, so if anybody actually knows anybody, let me know. And I think that's it for me. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you. Um, thank you for everything. Councilman O'Toole.
Delighted to. So the administration, finance and HR committee met last evening as we move closer to introduction of the budget and the entire picture starts to become more clear. We're dialing in on our finished product. We took some of the suggestions, which came from the finance advisory committee and implemented them into the budget, allowing our final numbers to come in more in line with where we would like to be. Uh, we also discussed a number of personnel matters, including replacing our tax appeal attorney, Joanne Ricardi, who will be retiring at the end of next month, and also bringing in an intern or two to assist at Borough Hall this summer. Uh, finally, we discussed implementing new cybersecurity measures to fortify our systems against, uh, the uncountable number of threats that are faced by municipalities on a daily basis, uh, including holding towns ransom for hundreds of thousands of dollars. Um, it is unfortunately something that we must be protected against. Thankfully, our IT provider has a strong understanding on how best to protect ourselves in that. So it's something we've been preparing for and we may even see some benefits from Jeff, the joint insurance fund. Uh, all in all, it was a more uplifting meeting than we've had in a while. So.
It was.
I'm good.
Yeah, that was a good, that was a good meeting. Um, thank you to everyone and I, I thought, and we moved through some of those issues. So important issues in that committee. So, great. Thank you for your work there. Councilman Strouch, would you like to give your report?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor Bernstein. Um, before I start my DPW committee report, um, I do want to thank Amy, uh, Councilwoman Wazinski and the entire 220, 230 redevelopment team. Um, I, I, um, I, I, I look forward to this meeting with everything we're doing. Uh, the, the subdividing of the property into the lots, that will be forever the, the future of that property. And, um, I, I, uh, I just appreciate the mayor and council having the, the willingness and the ability to see the benefits of, you know, taking control of the development of key parcels. And this one is a key parcel in Allendale. And I think that, um, residents for generations to come, will, will reap the benefits of the new Borough Hall, Community Center and the, the pilot, uh, revenue program, which, uh, you know, I, I, I want to thank you all personally for the hundreds, if not thousands of hours you spent over the past three years getting this to where we are today. So thank you, Amy.
Thanks, Jim. And, you know, um, I just wanted to, something I forgot in my report, like all this, our, we went through, uh, we had a closed session before and we went through all of our initial objections of the acquisition and we pretty much hit them all. And the most important one is that we're doing this and providing this for residents and we're not going to be increasing taxes because the pilot's going to be paying the debt that's going to be able to provide for the, uh, community.
Yeah, exactly. It's, it really is a, 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 a great thing that you and your team have done. So, thank you again. With regard to my DPW report, um, the, uh, pothole patching is scheduled for next week. Um, I know we've had a, uh, a, a couple of areas where the pavement has kind of been letting go. So we'll be taking care of that next week. Um, the county had loaned us a bulldozer, which I really want to thank the county for that. And Lane Simon used it to spread, to spread out 200 tons of new sand. Um, yeah, so the Crestwood Lake preparation, um, has really gone well under the leadership of, um, Rich McDowell and everything's, uh, running smoothly. Uh, and we're looking forward to it. Rich has also been, um, handling the opening of the compost, uh, center earlier this month. Um, and the recycling center has been very busy and, uh, so we're, we're appreciative to the DPW team that, that manages that. Uh, John Pasquino, um, has been doing a great job maintaining the fields. And, um, I actually ran into him, uh, had the ability to catch up with him. John went to, uh, was born and raised in Allendale and was only a couple of years behind me in school. And it's, uh, we're lucky to have, um, several members of the DPW, um, either born in town or grew up in town or, and some of them still live in town. Um, and they, they, they really, they do their work with the gusto that, that I appreciate. The, uh, Amy mentioned the building of the new playground, um, progressing well and the hope is that it might be ready on Memorial Day, um, for weekend opening. And, uh, our amazing, um, Ron Kistner, um, is also going to be working with, um, our borough engineer, Mike Freeland, another amazing performer as far as I'm concerned. And they're going to be scheduling the 2021 repaving, uh, project, uh, proposals for town. So, uh, I look forward to that as well. Um, and I'll end my report there. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you so much. Uh, 7:57, I can give it a shot.
7:58. Up to you.
Seven by my clock. Give it a shot.
All right. Um, we are encouraged by the declining COVID cases in Allendale and Bergen County, um, as well as the loosening of the restrictions in the state. Uh, just today, there were guidelines put out at the end of, uh, on the end of year, school activities. And on May 10th, outdoor gathering limits increased to 500 people and indoor will be at 50% with a 250-person limit. We will keep you informed through our website, AllendaleNJ.gov, as updates are released from the state. Here in Allendale, we're very excited that our parks are open for recreation and the Crestwood Lake will be opening on May 29th. We also, as Ed, uh, Councilman O'Connor, O'Connell indicated, we formed a committee to plan our Memorial Day remembrance ceremony. We discussed it at our OEM meeting last Tuesday. Um, and I will have more information on that at our next meeting. We are trying to make sure that what we're doing is safe for everyone, is also consistent with the CDC and the state, uh, restrictions and guidelines. I would still like to encourage everyone to remain committed to safe and healthy practices. On a positive note, vaccines are becoming more readily available with the Meadowlands Megasite and New Bridge Medical Center, both now offering walk-in vaccinations with no appointment necessary. Um, upcoming events, May 15th, the BCUA will be having their hazardous, household hazardous waste collection event at Camp Gull. You can visit their website, BCUA.org for all of the details. On May 22nd, we're going to be having our annual free paper shredding day, which is sponsored by the BCUA. This year it will be taking place at Crestwood Park from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Details can be found on our website. Also, on May 22nd, the Board of Health will be having a rabies clinic, as well as the clerk's office will be onsite to process Crestwood registrations, compost permits, pet licensing and all, and other constituent services. So that will be a big day and it should be a, a good time to get a lot of things done. At our next meeting, May 13th, I just want to bring it to everyone's attention. On May 12th, the Garden Club will be celebrating their 100th anniversary. Uh, so at the May 13th meeting, we'll be celebrating this milestone as well as recognize our commitment to beautifying our committee. And we will also be presenting a proclamation to the Allendale Community for Senior Living in recognition of their contributions to our community during National Nursing Home Week. Typically, the last couple of years I've gone there to present it, but we may do it virtually or we may do it here at the meeting. And that is it for my report. So, Ed, now I would request a motion to adjourn the work session.
So moved.
Second. Thank you, Liz. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, everyone, let's, um, let's move to, the regular session is now eight o'clock. And this is the April 29th, 2021 regular session of the Allendale Mayor and Council. Welcome to everyone who is joining us via video and teleconference. Um, at this time, we ask the public to please mute their devices so as not to distract from the business of the meeting. There will be two opportunities during this meeting for the public to speak and we will advise you at the appropriate times. Michelle, please read the Open Public Meetings Act announcement.
Sure. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. Meeting dates for the year confirmed at the annual meeting are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and on the borough website, published in the record within the first 10 days of the new year and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger.
Great. If you could all please join me in rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republicans for its stand and coordination with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, Michelle, please conduct the roll call.
Councilwoman Holman?
Here.
Councilman O'Connell?
Here.
Councilman O'Toole?
Here.
Councilman Sasso is absent. Councilman Strouch?
Here.
Councilwoman Wazinski?
Here.
And Mayor Bernstein.
Here. Thank you, Michelle. Uh, public comment on agenda items only. So I will open the floor to the public for agenda items only. Uh, anyone here wishes to be heard on agenda items? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I'll close the meeting to the public for that portion. We now get to the resolutions. Uh, Bergen County Open Space Grant Application Improvement at Crestwood Lake. We discussed this during our work session. Tonight, we're holding our public hearing for the Bergen County Open Space Grant Application Improvements at Crestwood Lake Project. Um, is it, um, before I open the floor to the public, Amy, is there anything you'd like to speak to on this grant application?
Yeah, so this is, this is to go in for, um, uh, 20, I guess, 2021. I'm always off by a year. And, uh, the improvements that we're looking to do is, uh, around in general Crestwood Lake, uh, to get a new PA system and possibly conduits for the, um, lighting and to improve in our Mobi mats. Upgrade our Mobi mats.
Great. Thank you. At this time, I open the floor to the public for comments on the grant application. Anyone who wishes to be heard? Not seeing anyone. I'll close the floor to the public. Uh, council members, any comments, questions? Not seeing anyone. Um, I would move, um, to, am I seeking your?
Request a motion.
Uh, I request a motion to, uh, move, uh, for Resolution 20 dash 127, authorize submission of 2021 Bergen County Open Space Trust Fund Municipal Program Park Improvement Application Improvements at Crestwood Lake Project. I'd request a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Amy. Second?
Holman.
Thank you, Liz. Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso is absent. Councilman Strouch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wazinski?
Yes.
Is that everyone?
I think I got everyone.
Okay. Next is 21 dash 128, approve application of Hampshire Allendale, um, MF Urban Renewal LLC for tax exemption and financial agreement. I would request a motion to approve the application.
So moved.
Uh, request a second?
Second.
Any council members have any comments on this resolution? Not seeing any. Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso is absent. Councilman Strouch?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wazinski?
Yes.
Okay. Next, introduction of ordinances. Ordinance 21 dash 07, which is the ordinance of the Borough of Allendale County of Bergen, New Jersey, approving a financial agreement with Hampshire Allendale MF Urban Renewal LLC. I would request a council member to make a motion to introduce and pass on first reading ordinance 21 dash 07 and set the hearing for May 13th, 2021 at 8:00 PM or soon thereafter in the council chambers of the Allendale Municipal Building.
So moved.
Great. Second, please?
Liz, Holman.
Thank you. Um, Michelle, please read the title of the ordinance and then conduct a roll call.
Sure. This is ordinance 21 dash 07, an ordinance of the Borough of Allendale County of Bergen, New Jersey, approving a financial agreement with Hampshire Allendale MF Urban Renewal LLC. Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso is absent. Councilman Strouch?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wazinski?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Next is ordinance 21 dash 08 that we discussed in the work session and Attorney Ray Wiss, uh, discussed it further. I would request a council member to make a motion to introduce and pass on first reading ordinance 21 dash 08 and set the hearing for May 27th, 2021 at 8:00 PM or soon thereafter in the council chambers of the Allendale Municipal Building.
So moved, O'Connell.
Thank you, Ed. I'd request a second?
Second, Strouch.
Thank you, Jim. Michelle, please read the title of the ordinance and then conduct a roll call.
Sure. This is ordinance 21 dash 08, an ordinance by Borough of Allendale, known as Allendale, in Bergen County, New Jersey prohibiting the operation of any class of cannabis businesses within its geographical boundaries and amending section 270 dash 26 M1 of the Allendale Municipal Code. Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso is absent. Councilman Strouch?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wazinski?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Next is the consent agenda. And so I'm going to request a motion to approve the consent agenda, just with the, um, the caveat or the modification, um, as amended to 21 dash 134, which had a start date of May 15th instead of May 10th. So I'd request a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
So moved, Holman.
Thank you, Liz. Second?
Amy.
Thank you, Amy. Um, Michelle, please conduct the roll call.
Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso is absent. Councilman Strouch?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wazinski?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Any unfinished business? Any new business? No. Uh, we did the committee reports. I did my mayor's report, um, staff reports. Ray, would you like to, Borough Attorney?
I think a lot of, uh, what we've been involved in has been addressed in the, uh, the council committee reports, but obviously a very big day with respect to 220, 230 in terms of, um, the introductions and the approvals and, and moving it all forward. May 10th fast approaches. I think the calendar says it's made by the weekend. So to finally be approaching the, uh, the closing on 230 is a momentous step, uh, in what has been a lengthy process. And, uh, you know, certainly the, uh, the committee has worked very, very hard on that. The water utility, uh, as Councilwoman Holman knows, that's running parallel to the 220, 230 process. And, uh, uh, that is moving forward very well too, where the reference was to the, uh, the May 21st date for the responses to the RFP. Uh, and that has come together, I think, in good form to allow for a good deliberative process in terms of what the borough wishes to do on that going forward. Uh, with Michelle and Tatiana, um, the Oprah requests are unabated. Michelle may speak to that even further, but, uh, it is, it's incredible, both numerically and in terms of the scope of that. and in terms of the scope of that. It is not something that the, the clerk's office can just respond to in and of itself. Usually there's outreach to other departments and it does take a lot away, you know, and I'm not meaning the, the public asset, access aspect, but it takes a lot away from the regular work of the clerk's office. And that really has just gone on and on. With Ron, we've had some, I'll say, interesting property issues over the, the last couple of weeks, hopefully resolving some neighborhood disputes and property issues. Hopefully that's all going well. And then on the, the contract front, we're bringing to closure, albeit painfully slow, the white collar contract. Really, it's dotting i's and crossing t's. The economics of it has been agreed to for quite a while. And then certain matters involving promotions and the like with the police department. So pretty busy two weeks.
It has, it has. And thank you, um, thank you for your guidance on most of these, on many of these things. Michelle, would you like to give your report?
Sure, thank you. The state has notified us that they have effectively extended the deadline to June 30th to file the annual financial disclosure. So I'll get, I'll get a memo out to everyone, but the, the new deadline is June 30th. The clerk's office will be open on Tuesday, May 18th until 9:00 PM for late night voter registration, but will also be, you know, processing Crestwood registrations and compost permits and anything else that anyone would like us to do. And then just to speak to the Oprah request today, we got a request that has over 7,000 records that we have to go through.
My gosh, that is insane. This is, we have to do something about this. It's crazy.
And, and it's not, I'm sure that there's a lot of redactions and Mr. Wiss's office has to get involved with that.
And they're all usually like out of towners, right? Looking for, you know, whatever for their businesses. It's completely a system that's being abused. It's just really a shame what it's doing to all these smaller municipalities. Someone's got to fight it. Who's going to fight it?
Well, it effectively becomes an unfunded mandate. You know, compliance with the statute becomes something that is, is commended to the clerk's office. And obviously that takes away from the municipal aspect of the clerk's function. So the clerk is supposed to be a municipal officer and I guess spending, Michelle, I don't want to say half the time, but quite a bit of your time responding to Oprah requests. And that's
We need to start, well, we can't, but I think the state, something, somebody, maybe if they start getting charged, they won't be just so free with their request, you know?
You know, I just wanted to say that Tatiana primarily handles these in the clerk's office and she works with all of the different departments to fulfill these requests. So I just wanted to give her, especially Tatiana, a shout out, but to all the employees because it, it places a huge burden on all of us. We're a small borough with, you know, limited staff and, and we do try our best to get everything processed. Thank you.
Yeah, no, and, and, and you do. I mean, not only do you try, you do. I mean, we, what, what you, and I'm going to focus on you and, and the team, and you don't want to hear it, and I know, but I'm going to say it anyhow. What you have done to keep us running smoothly in the time of COVID, when nothing, when all the rules were changed and what you couldn't do, you know, just, just under the most unbelievable circumstances. So, I mean, those things I try to say to you every two weeks. I mean, you have been the backbone, you have been so critical and you have been so successful, whether you want to acknowledge it or not, in, in keeping us running smoothly. My point, on top of all that, on top of what you've done, on top of the five and 10 plates that you're spinning at once, so that we can be here and the borough runs successfully and smoothly, you know, then to be dealt this, these extra things.
Yeah, that's, that was a big one today. Over seven, I mean, over 7,000 documents that have to be removed.
Yeah, and, and I can't, I can't speak to, I won't. I don't know whether Ray would shush me, you know, as to what that one was, although I know what it was. And it's not for, it's not for any, I don't think it was for what the purpose of the, the skyline, the, the statutes, the regulations, et cetera. It's just what someone said before, it's misused, it's abused, and you and we are bearing the brunt of it. So I'll get off my soapbox, but thank you very much for everything.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Okay. Ron, anything in your report?
The only thing I forgot to share with my commissioner, Strauss, was that myself and Lane also had an excellent meeting with Northwest Bergen Utility Authority. They handle our sewers. And through the 2020, they were not able to do, what we do is we do a third of the sewer system a year for preventive maintenance and inspections. So we're going to be doing both 2020 and 2021, 2020 as soon as we get the resolution and 21 later. So we have this, we'll be, we'll have actually a whole town done by the end of the year again. And then we'll be doing also 125 catch basins. We do about, we try to do 20 to 25% catch basin as we open them up with, with Northwest Bergen. They jet them, they vacuum them for us, and we get a report on the, the condition of the walls. And then we, like we did last year, we did a request for proposals and we subbed that out. So the ones that are in poor shape, as you'll see the whole, as the slots cave it in, we average about 12 to 15 to 20 repair replacements of those, just to keep the stormwater and the sewer systems, you try to prevent the maintenance to stay ahead of emergencies and backups, because backups never happen at a good time. It's usually about three in the morning, it's usually Christmas Eve. So it's been my experience. So we're doing a great job with that. And that's my report there. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Ron. Thank you for all of your work. You are, as we said before, you're, you're on this 24/7. You're here Saturdays, you're here Sundays, you're here late at night, you're here early in the morning. And if you're not here, you're home.
Never early in the morning. That's why I draw a line.
And no, if you're not, no, because I've been in meetings back to back to back to back with you and then at nine o'clock at night, we'll catch up. So, I mean, you're, for you, it's 24/7. So huge debt of gratitude. Lisa, are you, are you still with us, Lisa?
Yes, I am. And the only thing I want to say is that your taxes are due May 1st. You can pay them online, you can drop them off at Borough Hall in the Dropbox, or you can mail them.
It, it's not polite for you to be chuckling at the same time you, you give that.
Sorry. No, I think that was Ron chuckling. I wasn't.
I left it out of my report.
I wouldn't expect anything less.
Right. Thank you for that, Lisa.